Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, November 10th, 2016, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Roll call please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Reinhardt is absent.
Could we have an emotion to adopt the agenda, please?
A motion that we adopt the agenda of Thursday, November 10th.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the consent calendar. Please note that items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion, adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar?
No.
I will not be able to approve September 22nd because I wasn't here.
And I will not be commenting on October 13th because I was absent. So with those two exceptions, could we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I do have a comments on October 13th.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of detail is not mentioned here in regard to public hearing on 500 Sierra Point Road, use permit UP-616. We specifically mention about the on-street parking, if they can be legalized, all the other issues regarding the retaining walls and all that. There was a lot of discussion about geotechnical aspect of that, so none of them is noted here. I think in the past, we did try to cover some of that, so we'll remember next time.
Well, if you have specific language you want to...
It's not the language, but it's the content that we discussed, some of the things that we have concern regarding the parking itself, the on-street parking legalization, and all of that is nothing is mentioned here. It's just very condensed. It doesn't tell you what was the real issue, what we were...
Yeah, normally, I mean, I see your point, especially since this is a continued item and the commission will be reconsidering it. As a matter of course, what you're, you know, what we're preparing typically is action minutes, but in this particular case, I would concur with you that since it was a continued item, there should have been a little more discussion for the commission's benefit. But what we prepare on a regular basis are really action minutes, and they're not going to get into a great deal of discussion, especially if it's an item where the commission did act at that particular meeting. So we'll come back with revisions, some updates to these minutes for the commission's consideration.
So the October 13th meeting, we're gonna...
You want to continue that?
Okay. So we want to approve the September 25th, and I'm not going to do that.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the draft action minutes of September 22nd and to continue the meeting's minutes from October 13th until a later time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excuse me? Oh, was there a second? Sorry. Thank you. Okay, oral communications. At this time, if anyone from the audience would like to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda, please step forward. No? Okay. Written communications. I have a flyer that is from, I guess, Housing Leadership Council, and it's inviting us to tomorrow's, or I guess, no, Friday, October 14th. This is way past, though, so I guess it's no longer relevant because we're in November. So at any rate, we just received this. Aside from that, are there any other written communications? No? Okay. So on to new business, public hearing. Zoning text amendment RZ-5-16, zoning text amendment to chapters 17.32, 17.34, 17.43 of Title 17, zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code to update existing accessory secondary dwelling unit regulations to be consistent with recently adopted amendments to section 65852.2 of the California Government Code. City of Brisbane is the applicant. Steph?
Alright, good evening commissioners. So zoning text amendments before you tonight, update the city's existing secondary dwelling unit regulations to be consistent with new state legislation that was recently adopted at the end of September. These state regulations contained in the government code are intended to encourage the production of secondary dwelling units throughout the state by imposing mandatory development standards on local jurisdictions. So these new regulations cover a variety of areas within the zoning ordinance, the first being the terminology or how we refer to these units, maximums for floor area for these units, off-street parking requirements, discretionary review process, and conversion of garages. So let's start with the easy stuff. The new regulations replace the term secondary dwelling unit with accessory dwelling unit. So the proposed amendments would replace that term found throughout the municipal In regards to floor area, under our current municipal code standards, a maximum floor area of 1,000 square feet is imposed, and of course, that's taken in whole with the all-floor area on the property when we're calculating the FAR floor area ratio. Under the new government code provisions, a detached accessory dwelling unit, so a standalone accessory structure, can be up to 1,200 square feet maximum. That is still subject to the overall floor area limitation of the lot through our FAR requirements. For attached accessory dwelling units, so new additions to an existing single-family home, the size can be either 50% of the existing living area or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less, so you can be no more than 1,200 square feet. Changes to parking requirements, this is fairly significant. Under these new state regulations, no parking is required for accessory dwelling units if they're within a half-mile of a public transit stop. So in our city, we are served by SAM Trans bus route, 292 along Bay Shore Boulevard. There are multiple stops within our city limits, as well as a publicly available commuter shuttle operated by CCAG that is free to the public and takes commuters to and from the Caltrain stations. So the maps on this slide are also in your staff report, and they basically show the half-mile radius taken from a two-sample transit stops, showing the extent of this exemption, which again is all lots in the R1 and RBA districts. So another change in the way we regulate accessory dwelling units is to how we permit them. Currently, under our current process, an accessory dwelling unit is permitted through an accessory dwelling unit permit approved by the planning director. The director can only approve this permit if certain objective standards are met. Those standards apply both to the property itself, so the zoning district that it would be allowed in, as well as the lot size, so again, 5,000 square foot minimum. The regulations also currently require parking for all accessory dwelling units. We have the limitation of 1,000 square feet. The site must have legal means of access via a public road, access to utilities, and must comply with all building health and safety codes.
Can I ask a question at this point, or not?
Sure.
Okay, so, do we know how many of such units actually meet these requirements in the downtown area?
That are permitted, that we have issued permits for?
That would, that would actually meet this requirement, because it seems like that either they're a little higher up the hill, a lot of them, or that they are on lots that are not that big.
Right, so, I mean, you can imagine with a minimum lot size requirement of 5,000 square feet that, under our current regulations, would really restrict that to larger lots, which, there's a lot of 2,500 square foot lots in the lower reaches of central Brisbane, as well as in the hills. So I don't have an immediate number...
It just seems to me that this is all fine and good, but I can't imagine there's more than a couple of different units that would meet these requirements.
I'd imagine that conversion ADUs could potentially exist in large numbers.
Where would you find the big spaces, though?
Do you want me to go on?
Maybe you should go on.
Okay, okay. So, changing our existing procedure, which again, requires an ADU permit for any accessory dwelling unit whatsoever, we retain the authority to require the ADU permit for accessory dwelling units that are created by adding floor area, so building a new detached accessory structure or building an addition intended to accommodate an accessory unit. So for, however, for accessory dwelling units that are created within the existing space of a single-family dwelling in a single-family zoning district, we may only require a building permit. There are some caveats to that as well, so those conversion ADUs, as we've been referring to them as, they must have exterior, dedicated exterior access, so independent of the rest of the main dwelling, there must be access to the street outside of the unit. It must also, whichever structure it's in, must comply with minimum setbacks required for buyer safety. So there are some caveats to that. So, you know, one thing to note here, obviously, the thing we lose, a little bit of control over here, is the requirement to have a minimum lot size, because as long as it is an existing space with an existing single-family home and meets all of the requirements outlined here, we must permit it with a building permit. And the last topic that we'll go over is conversion of a garage. So, under the new state regulations, if a garage is converted into an accessory dwelling unit as a conversion ADU, we can require replacement of those lost parking spaces on the property. What we can't require is that those spaces be covered, so we may require that they, you know, replace what was lost, just not in the same covered condition. And I'll just leave this up for our discussion. This is a summary table that was in your staff report with more detailed comparison of our current standards versus the new government code provisions.
But that not covered, covered parking. That does mean that they can have the off-street parking too, or need to have the on-site?
So, in the case of a garage conversion, so if a garage is converted to an ADU, we can't require parking for the ADU. What we can require is that the parking spaces that were serving the main unit, the single-family home, that were lost, be replaced.
Replace?
On-site.
On-site, yeah, that's what's my question.
Yes, sorry.
Now, in case there is no, I mean, majority of time, what happens is we have the one
but just want to make sure. So, pretty much, this is what we have to do in order to be compliant with the new state
covered and one, you know, tandem parking. In that situation, what will happen?
law, right?
Correct.
We won't be able to convert the garage in then?
So, the new state law goes into effect on January 1st.
Because the driveway is already occupied, so how are they going to create a new?
If a city, like we do, if a city already has an ordinance that regulates ADUs, we If we can require that they replace the lost parking spaces, if they cannot do would, we have to update our existing ordinance to comply. that, I would assume we would, they would have to apply for a use permit as our current There are some cities that never adopted an STU ordinance and always just use state procedure allows.
So that's...
So it would be a discretionary process at that point. standards.
So this is, I want to clarify that, because it's not clear in here as to what will happen
If we didn't update our ordinance, it would be null and void as of that date, and we
in that situation.
would be subject to the broader state standards. Okay.
I have another clarifying question.
It eliminates a little bit of our local control.
All of this text seems to imply that this is one ADU and not two or five, correct?
So, so the state law will dominate regardless of being preempted?
Oh, so, the standard that there's only one ADU per site, yes, that remains. Correct.
Isn't that the case, that if our standards are more, you know...
Okay.
So if you have an existing in-law, and you want to convert the garage, you don't
Well, so what our local ordinance is allowed to do under the state law, under both former
do that?
and proposed new amendments, is we can say, okay, here are certain areas of town where You may not create another, no, only one.
I see, okay. Okay.
we'll allow them. So, for example, we say they're only allowed in the R1 and RBA districts. We also will be able to maintain a requirement for new ADUs, new floor area ADUs, of minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. So those are the type of locational and kind of objective standards we are allowed by the state to have in our ordinance that we would not have if we just were using state standards.
But don't we have the option to be more stringent than the...
Not in this case.
Sometimes that is the case, but in this particular legislation, it's very clear that the state standards in certain regards to certain things are controlling whether or not they're less or more restrictive than the city, that we need to comply with those state standards. We cannot be more restrictive than the state, for example, in parking or the permitting process for building permits.
So the ordinance actually says that?
State law, yes. It's very clear that we're preempting.
And the full text of the new legislation is an attachment to your staff report, too.
So, when we get a variance, oftentimes, we look around and say that this unit or this structure was allowed, and this structure was allowed, and that structure was allowed. So if we don't allow this, that would impose undue hardship. I can't really put the correct language there, but do you understand what I'm saying? Okay, so, if we allow this in one district, and then we go to another district, or a place that's, you know, a little further away than this, that would, and someone wants a variance to allow a structure to be built or to, that there simply isn't enough parking, wouldn't we then therefore need to say that because this is allowed down here, that it would create undue hardship if we did not allow it, you know, further up the hill?
I guess, I'm not, to make sure we're very clear here, is that the parking exemption we're talking about is only for ADUs, right? This is all limited to ADUs.
Right.
And with the way those concentric circles are that Julie has on that map, all of the properties in town where accessory units, ADUs, are allowed would all be subject to the same parking standards. So we're not treating anybody differently based on their geographic proximity in the zone, and so I'm not sure if that's, there is no, we're not creating multiple kind of...
But further up the hill?
Within the RBA, yes, it's all within a half-mile.
So any unit that actually comes here, okay.
Correct, so...
So all of downtown Brisbane would apply?
Right, every, because of the small size of our town.
Right.
All of the lots in the R1 and RBA district where ADUs would be permitted happen to be within a half-mile of a public transit stop, which means...
That's what I thought.
Yes. So there's no prop, so there is no treating, we would not treat any property differently in regards to the parking requirements. Every property would be exempt.
What about those shuttle buses that are basically for some company, like Yahoo?
Right, so...
They are coming, say, all the way to the...
Those are not public, so they're private, so those would not count. But what does count, like I mentioned, was the commuter shuttle that, I believe, goes to Caltrain, that CCAG operates and is free to residents.
So it's basically, they stop at Old County Roads and San Bruno at Glen Park, those are the two men.
There's other stops in town. I used these because they happen to illustrate the extent the best, to which the exemption would apply.
Are there any stops in, say, Humboldt Road or anything?
Well, the Free Shuttle, the Glen Park at San Bruno Ave stop, to my knowledge, is the last stop, like, in town before it heads out to Bay Shore. I don't believe there's any, there aren't any shuttles that go up into the upper reaches of central Brisbane.
Not that I know of. I know there's a stop on San Bruno Ave by Brisbane Elementary.
Yeah, by the, yeah, Glen Park.
You've got that one, I think, already.
Okay. So it's fairly straightforward, we have no choice?
That's it.
No discussion, just clarification.
It is a public hearing.
It is. So, we, can we have a motion to open it up to a public hearing?
I motion we open the floor to public hearing.
Would anyone like to step forward, please?
Someone who wants to comment?
Thank you commissioners and staff, and baby. So, I had a couple questions. I read through this before I saw it here in print, and...
Oh, sorry, Paul, could you go ahead and introduce yourself for the audience?
Sure, Paul Blue Scalabrine, Brisbane resident.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, so it's my understanding that it's 5,000 square foot lots that only this applies to? Is that correct?
So through the chair, so, under our current regulations for secondary dwelling units, in order for a property to have a secondary dwelling unit, it must be at least 5,000 square feet in size. That would remain the case moving forward under these new regulations, except if someone wanted to do a conversion ADU.
Okay.
So except if they want to convert an existing area in their single-family home.
Okay, so, thank you. And that's what I was getting at, because I was reading the requirements, and it seemed like that was for newly constructed accessory units as opposed to conversion accessory dwelling units, right? And then it said 17.43.02, and that seemed like that was just under definitions and not how it's applied. I was just trying to see if mine fell within that category.
Got it.
So, one of the other two concerns that I have, or questions I have about it, is does that change, if I decided to do that, would that change my three-bedroom home to a larger-sized bedroomed home, which would be reassessed through the county? I mean, would it be a four-bedroom home? Or is it just still a three-bedroom, one bath that I have with this added unit?
Are you talking about converting space or adding space?
No, converting, I have a full downstairs, it's just basement.
Well, the assessor, and again, I'm not sure of all their requirements, but typically, when you add habitable space, they're going to reassess it based on that. I would assume they designated, you would have designated it as an ADU, it would be assessed as an ADU as opposed to an extra bedroom, but I don't know that for a fact in terms of the assessor's rule.
Okay, so that's something I would take up with the assessor's office?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph. Would anyone else like to comment or have questions for the staff?
Any more public commentary?
No, okay. So, can we have a motion to close public hearing, please?
A motion to close public hearing.
We have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I have one more question about this. This new ordinance has direct bearing to UP-616 that we deferred from last meeting, and I was wondering if it was appropriate for staff to contact the applicant and make sure they've read it.
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Could we have a motion to adopt the amendments?
I'll make a motion.
The attached resolution, sorry, the attached resolution RZ-5-16.
I motion that we adopt zoning text amendment RZ-516, which includes zoning text amendments chapter, to chapters 17.32, 17.34, and 17.43 of Title 17, zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So on to items initiated by the staff, 2016 California Building Code update.
Yes, thank you. The city is in the process of updating its Building Code adoption chapter contained in the Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 1504, as to stay in alignment with the state's update of the California Building Code. And I'll refer to the California Building Code as the CBC, I've mentioned it several times here, so. The CBC is updated every three years, and this 2016 edition will take effect statewide on January 1st. The city council hearing on the ordinance to adopt the CBC is being scheduled for December. As occurs in every code update cycle, this latest update has implication on a series of city-adopted REACH codes. A REACH code is a local ordinance that exceeds the state-mandated requirements on a specific topic area. Staff is providing this informational session to update the planning commission on the implications of the new CBC edition on our REACH codes. It's not intended to provide a detailed update of all the various changes to the CBC, that would take quite some time. We will also be providing a similar update to the Open Space and Ecology Committee at their meeting next week. The city of Brisbane has REACH codes for the following topic areas, that's indoor and outdoor water conservation, waste recycling and diversion, and green buildings. Additionally, a new energy generation and conservation ordinance is being proposed as a new local REACH code. The amendment to add a new energy REACH code is consistent with the city's climate action plan goal of reducing the city's carbon footprint and to help curb global warming. By way of background on energy, with the previous CBC cycle in 2013, the estimated improvements in building energy efficiencies for new construction were to yield energy use reductions of 25 to 30% over the previous code cycle of 2010. Now, for this 2016 cycle, it's estimated to result in new residential buildings that will use another 28% less energy versus that 2013 CBC. So there's already dramatic energy use reductions being realized with each CBC cycle. These code trends reflect the state's...
adopted reach codes. A reach code is a local ordinance that exceeds the state mandated requirements on a specific topic area. Staff is providing this informational session to update the planning commission on the implications of the new CBC addition on our reach codes. It's not intended to provide a detailed update of all the various changes to the CBC. That would take quite some time. We will also be providing a similar update to the Open Space and Ecology Committee at their meeting next week. The City of Brisbane has reach codes for the following topic areas. That's indoor and outdoor water conservation, waste recycling and diversion, and green buildings. Additionally, a new energy generation and conservation ordinance is being proposed as a, a new local reach code. The amendment to add a new energy reach code is consistent with the city's climate action plan goal of reducing the city's carbon footprint and to help curb global warming. By way of background on energy, with the previous CBC cycle in 2013, the estimated improvements in building energy efficiencies for new construction were to yield energy use reductions of twenty-five to thirty percent over the previous code cycle of 2010. Now, for this 2016 cycle, it's estimated to result in new residential buildings that will use another twenty-eight percent less energy versus that 2013 CBC. So there's already dramatic energy use reductions being realized with each CBC cycle. These code trends reflect the state's goal that all new residential construction be zero net energy, or ZNE, by 2020, and that non-residential will be ZNE by 2030. To date, energy use reductions are largely borne out by building envelope HVAC and lighting efficiencies. And although solar readiness is required and the 2016 CBC installation of solar on new buildings is not. With the city's goals in mind, as expressed in both the CAP or Climate Action Plan and by individual members of the Planning Commission, as well as other bodies such as Open Space and Ecology, this is an area that is ripe for the city to address through a reach code. As an aside, it's worth noting that any local jurisdiction's energy code that goes beyond the state mandated minimums must have a cost-effectiveness study completed and approved by the California Energy Commission. Independently, undertaking this process can be costly and time-consuming. However, jurisdictions may use other jurisdictions' approved cost-effectiveness study for the same provisions within the same climate zone. At this time, there is one jurisdiction listed with the CEC, the Energy Commission, that is within our climate zone with a cost-effectiveness study that's been completed, although there's others that are in process. And, uh, that's the City of San Mateo. It, it provides a, a good model for Brisbane. It includes cool roof recommendations for low-pitched roofs, or, excuse me, requirements for low-pitched roofs, as well as rooftop solar for both residential and non-residential new construction. These reach code provisions are fairly straightforward and modest. And further information on that was provided in staff's memo. So an ordinance based on San Mateo's model will be presented to council for consideration in December along with the CBC adopted ord- adoption ordinance. On the topic of the green building ordinance, that city reach code was originally adopted in 2007, then in 2012, city council directed that Open Space and Ecology Committee and the Planning Commission form a subcommittee to provide recommendations on potential updates. The subcommittee worked from 2012 to 2013 to provide those recommendations. Over prior to providing the recommendations, uh, the 2013 edition of the CBC surpassed what the subcommittee was, uh, prepared to recommend to city council. Ultimately, there were unresolved questions as to whether an updated green building ordinance would be material more effective, material more, more effective than the updated state codes, and also questions about the use of thirty, third-party systems and costs. But, uh, the twenty, 2007 green building ordinance remains in effect in Brisbane. And that ordinance still requires lead silver equivalency for non-residential covered projects and build, build a green rating equivalency for covered residential projects. To date, no projects have been built that were subject to the ordinance due to fairly large project size thresholds. And, um, also that construction in Brisbane in this time period has been comprised of smaller projects. When the CBC adoption ordinance is brought to council in December, council might, may choose at that time, or at any time really, to provide further direction as to whether to revisit the green building ordinance. In the meantime, it'll, it'll remain in effect in Brisbane. And on the subject of water, in 2010, the city adopted the water conservation ordinances for both indoor and outdoor water, consistent with the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, that's Bouska, based on their model ordinances. In April of last year, in response to the ongoing drought, Governor Brown issued an executive order directing state agencies to implement immediate measures to save water. And the Department of Water Resources adopted a model water-efficient landscape ordinance. And that became effective last December, and around the same time, Bouska also provided a regional model ordinance which surpassed the state's model. And so the city refined the, the regional ordinance and adopted that, so the city's outdoor water ordinance is actually more water conserving than the state's 2016 CBC. Staff's memo highlighted some of those areas where it were more stringent, and so I won't go through all those. On the topic of indoor water conservation, as I mentioned, the city adopted that ordinance in 2010. And with the, the subsequent CBC cycles, the provisions that were provided in that are, are now a moot point as they've been, um, met or exceeded by the state standards. So that would be something that we'll look at, at repealing with this CBC cycle. The city's waste recycling and diversion ordinance surpasses the state's new mandatory, or, excuse me, the city's waste recycling, uh, surpasses the state's new mandatory requirements in some areas, but not all, and so staff will be putting forward, uh, revisions to essentially match up with what the state has and, and keep what we already have on the books as more stringent. So, we would be surpassing the state in certain areas. In closing, this information has been provided for the planning commission's consideration. If the commission has any recommendations that it would like to pass on to council, it may do so, but there's no action that's required of you tonight. It's just an informational item.
I have a question about the proposal.
Okay.
And the section on solar installation draft precision provisions, A1A, it says buildings with less than ten thousand square feet of gross solar, uh, gross, gross floor area shall provide a minimum of three kilowatts photovoltaic system, and that sounds fine for a ten thousand square foot business. But I'm, I'm just wondering, are there very small businesses in Brisbane? And what's our smallest typical size and, and how might this provision affect small business owners?
So I'm sorry, I, I'm just finding my place there. So which number are you on?
Oh, um, on solar installation draft provisions, the first section, A1A, for non-residential buildings?
It's on page, uh-
Oh, yeah.
H one six.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, in staff's view, this is a fairly modest-sized system. It's one you might find even on your average single-family residence. So I, I'm, my thinking is that that is not, uh, too onerous, but there is an infeasibility exemption that I think could address that if, if, um, if that was a concern on a, on a special, on a case-by-case basis.
And I'm also wondering how these standards would apply to mixed-use buildings?
It is a good question, and, um, I would look at it as, I would, I think I would go with the more stringent of the two. If, if you had, um, a... Yeah, so I'd look at the number of units in the multifamily, and I'd look at the square footage of the commercial and, and apply the more stringent of the two.
And again, the infeasibility exemption would apply, right?
Right, if, it could apply.
If they meet the criteria.
Correct.
I was interested in finding out about cool roofs, low-pitched, high-pitched roofs. I found that rather confusing.
Yeah, I, I think with solar, it's a little more straightforward. People are used to hearing those, those numbers a little bit more now, and the, the roof pitch, I, to be honest, I had to have a conversation with our building inspector about that a little bit, and, and so the low pitch are, are, these are roofs that are, are essentially more of the, like, torched-down style roofs generally. They're, they're flatter roofs, and so you, you have less space essentially between the living space and the top of the roof often. Essentially, these standards are standards that you might have in, or that are in hotter regions of California and are not yet applied to, um, to our climate zone. So these, these are essentially lifted out of the code from other regions and, and so it does have exceptions built in with, in that as well, and those essentially go to how the roof is constructed, that if it's constructed to be more insulating than, uh, standard, you might, you might be able to apply that exception, and so. So it, it has to go, you have the solar reflectance and you have thermal emittance, which has to do with, with how much it, um, how much of the sun's rays are reflected off or, or transferred through, and it gets into some technical detail that I, I'd, uh, have a hard time getting too much deeper in depth on.
The flat roof, you don't have the much space to, to properly insulate.
Right.
But if you have an attic space, then you can thoroughly insulate that. And that's the difference here between the high pitch will be like this and low pitch will be almost like-
So that would be considered a cool roof?
Yeah, so, yeah, high pitch will be like this.
So for the higher pitched roofs, it would not be a requirement. It would just be for the low pitched roofs. And you'd also get airflow. Sorry.
Yeah, you had the space to insulate properly on the top, plus it provides a sort of a, like, insulation, the air in between the two.
Exactly.
Summertime, you have those wind fans to exhaust some of the air.
Right.
So that's the difference.
So some, some of the roofs, um, are kind of in a position where they don't really get a lot of sun, so that would be taken into consideration, I would assume, um, with these, I mean, you know, if, if a roof is just sort of shaded by another structure and it's not going to get sun, there would be an exemption, or?
Right, right. So that would be a case, I, I would say, where, where they could provide that information and apply for an exemption. And or if they had a higher pitched roof, it wouldn't even apply at all. Also, if the area is covered by solar, that wouldn't apply to a shady site in that instance, but if it's covered by solar, then, then the cool roof would not be necessary.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. In this particular case, we can have more stringent requirements than the state, right?
Right. The caveat to that is that if we go, um, beyond what this model is, this is strictly based on the San Mateo ordinance as a model, and so they have a cost-effectiveness study completed that, that, um, we can use in reference and, and, um, provide that information to the Energy Commission. If we go beyond that, then we're looking at doing our own cost-effectiveness study.
So in order to be more stringent, you need a cost-effective study?
That's correct. So if, if that's something that you wanted to recommend, a particular thing to council, they can consider that and send it back for, for further study.
Okay, and this is the, not the complete Building Code update, right? It's just the ones related to the solar and-
That's, that's correct.
Because there are a lot of things have changed in the new standard, like the requirement for the, for the windows and doors and all that, they're all related to the, to the effectiveness of how they trap the heat.
Right, so the, the CBC, there's, uh, Chapter fifteen oh four in our municipal code. That's essentially, that chapter is dedicated to adopting the, the CBC, the latest edition, and so all of the state's provisions are essentially adopted there, so they go into effect anyway, but what that does when the city adopts it is it, it gives, uh, power to enforce through our municipal code process for non-performance, and so it's, it's a necessary thing.
And they're even talking about triple-glazed windows. So that's going to escalate the prices of the-
I think that is in other climate zones, like desert type.
And, um, last thing is that with the few, with the new federal leadership now, they already indicated that they don't believe in climate changes and all of that stuff. Do you think that there is a possibility that feds can preempt us? And, you cannot give the answer here, but just a curiosity.
Well, I think Building Code is a state. You know, it's, it's adopted on a state basis. There's no federal code per se, so.
But they can say that we preempt all the requirements regarding the energy.
Sure, anything's possible, but, uh, yeah, that would be-
That's very, that's a danger.
Sure.
And California is the leader in, in this situation, so I don't know what's going to happen. Only, only the time will tell.
So I just had, um, a question about possibly doing a cost-efficiency study. If we were going to do part of it for certain parts of the code, would that be something that we could entertain? Would that even be physically feasible for us? Do we have a budget to work with, or how does that work?
There's no defined budget. That would be something that the council would have to authorize as part of exploring whatever reach provision they want to apply.
So we would make the recommendation for, let's just say, an X reach provision, and based on principle alone, and then if, if it's approved by the council, then the fiscal aspects are discussed?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions?
What I like to do is I, I like to spend a little bit more time reviewing this, and maybe if, if I see something that we should add to it as an stringent requirement from us, I will submit that to, for this law.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. Again, since this isn't necessarily a action item. You know, the commission doesn't collectively, we're not, well, maybe when we talk about our schedule later, whether or not we're going to have one more meeting before this item goes to the council.
So was this an example, the, the, the draft provisions for the solar aspects, or that's was the example of what?
No, that's what-
Is, is that specifically what's going to be presented?
This, right, in the, the case of Attachment A, which is the, the, um, energy piece. There are other pieces that I talked more generally about, which there'll be some revisions that are not included, but the energy piece is essentially lifted right out of the, the draft ordinance that, that would go to council. There are some other kind of front-end provisions and tail-end provisions that have to do with, um, enforcement and, and the title and things like that, but this is the, the meat of the code that you have right here.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
No more questions, so, next item.
So, um, yeah, we'll expect if any individual commissioner wants to add comments, uh, we'll append the staff report with those, uh, comments and recommendations.
Okay.
Okay.
On to items initiated by the commission. Standards for home sizes, lot coverage, floor area ratio, Central Brisbane.
Did, uh, Dave Reinhardt put in an application to remain, or is consistent?
No, he, he is not reapplying.
Do you know how many people applied?
Oh, I believe it was eight, including the sitting commissioners.
Yes. The current two here.
Yes. I think the interviews are scheduled for sometime in January.
Oh, I haven't heard yet.
Is there a list of the names available somewhere?
It was part of, I went to the council last meeting, yes. So it's, if you look at that council agenda, or the, whatever date that is, was. So it's, if you look at that council agenda, or the, whatever date that is, was.
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
Is anybody that we know applied?
Oh, yeah.
In the past.
Yes, yes, former, at least, there's one former commissioner who applied. I don't have the list right on, I looked at it a while ago, so, but yes, a former commissioner did apply.
Okay.
So I guess maybe the question with this item is, given the commission status, whether or not you want to entertain that item or put it on hold until you have a fully new and newly appointed commissioner? I defer to you.
I was going to suggest that we might defer it until we're all present, but since Dave has not reapplied anyway, perhaps we have a quorum of continuing, I mean, my only purpose here, you know, we're just talking, so I think it might be as fine of a time as any to open that discussion.
I think we can go ahead and start it, and then whatever the, I mean, because it can go both ways, right? You can say that wait till we have the full, because we don't know who's being reappointed, or who's actually, basically, two-thirds, three, three-fifths of the commission may change dramatically. So the discussion may or may not be useful, depending on what the then sitting commission decides. So I actually think that it would be better to wait until we have a full board, if we're going to talk about something that's going to move forward anyway, and make a possibly an impact on the city. So my proposal is, despite Dave's absence, I think we should wait till we have all five of the five here, that we know for sure.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So I guess I'll read the appeals process first, and then we can do the cancellation?
Yeah, we need to talk about a prospective meeting date anyway, before we can wait.
So the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the city council. Except where specified otherwise, appeals shall be filed with the city clerk not later than 15 calendar days following the Planning Commission's decision. Exceptions to the 15-day filing period include the following. Appeal shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the Planning Commission's actions for use permits and variances, and 10 calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110.
And before you adjourn to a special meeting, again, I apologize that the council scheduled over our December 8th meeting, so we would like to schedule a special meeting. We had proposed December 1st. I think we had heard back from Commissioners Parker and Reinhardt affirmatively that they could attend. Commissioner Doe, I understand, is not available on the 1st, so the question was for Commissioners Anderson and Wannier as to whether or not you'd be available on the 1st.
I believe I'm available on the 1st. Maybe someone in the audience might know for sure if I'm available on the 1st. Paul, do you know if I'm available on the 1st? Thank you.
Is there any possibility to move it to another December date?
I would add that secretary too can do that for me. I'm still uncertain, you know?
Yeah, I just cannot, because the school has scheduled a parent-teacher conference that night for me.
Yeah. As of this point, whether or not it influences, and we can look at other dates, I just want to point out, we only have one business item, and that is our traditional tree, tree recycling. So we would anticipate that to be a very short meeting, so.
Don't want to be the Scrooge.
I think maybe we could suffer through that one without you.
Can I just say I would be in favor of that here now?
You don't count.
If we have.
I think there'll be enough staff members.
Okay, so we'll go ahead.
So you can go ahead. I'll try my best.
All right, so if you would like to adjourn to the meeting of December 1st, that would be great.
Make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn to the special meeting of December 1st at 7:30 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.